Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council this Monday, October 28th. Have a great audience tonight in chambers. So, welcome to all of you especially, and those of you that might be watching us on our public access television channel, welcome to you also. Madam Clerk, would you start with the roll, please?
Ms. Cole here.
Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Wilper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you would all please join me in standing for just a moment of prayer or silent reflection. If you gentlemen would all remove your hats, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Mr. Rudy Jones, our Community Development Director. Mr. Jones, please.
Would you please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and you may all be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is in number 11 because we amended the total project cost. Also with the approval of an amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes from October 21st regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any discussion regarding the agenda or the minutes?
Favorably.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have one proclamation tonight, and I'm betting that we have a whole bunch of folks here for that proclamation. It's Radiologic Technology Week, and I think Kim Messner, or, excuse me, Chris Messner. Chris, are you here? Chris, why don't you come up, and if you have friends and guests that you would like
to bring with you, just come on up. Just come on up, Chris. Just push on the door, and come on up, and, you know, come on up, guys. That's fabulous. How are you?
Thanks for having us.
You bet. Why don't you guys just kind of get behind us here, and so we can all get on television? Good to see you, good to see you. Hi, guys. Well, I hope nobody's sick at the hospitals tonight. We might have, I think we've got all the radiology techs right here. Anyway, Chris, we are here to celebrate Radiologic Technology Week, and I have a proclamation that I will read on that behalf. Whereas maintaining top physical condition is an important goal shared by citizens, medical professionals, and qualified practitioners specializing in the use of radiation and the treatment of disease. And whereas a safe radiological environment is made possible through the dedication and care of radiologic technologists, and whereas the, whoo, there's too many big words, whereas the contribution of these radiologic technologists, nuclear medicine technologists, diagnostic medical sonography technologists, and radiation therapy technologists in our state are helping our citizens live longer, healthier lives. And whereas these contributions are the result of education, research, and greater understanding. Now therefore be it resolved that I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of November 3rd through the 9th as Radiologic Technology Week in Waterloo, and I encourage all citizens to recognize this event and to participate in its observance. Chris, there you are, and I'm also going to give you a microphone, and you can say a couple of words. Let me through here just a minute, please. There we go. Just speak into that, they won't be able to hear you out in the TV land. There you go.
National Rad Tech Week is in remembrance of Wilhelm Rankin discovering x-rays in the year of 1895 on November 8th. So, Rad Tech Week has always held the week of November 8th. It is to honor and call attribute to the imaging services professionals that work every day all year long, and to help our, bring quality care to our patients in our hospitals and clinics and the healthcare field, so, thank you very much.
Eric, Chris, thank you very much. Thank you, guys, all for what you do for all of us every day, so, I appreciate it very much. Thank you, guys. I don't have to give a disclaimer today, they're all here behind us.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to make a motion that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B12. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $1,616,287.65, 1,616,287.65.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments regarding our consent agenda tonight?
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Consent agenda is adopted. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and as for the fiscal year 2014, Fourth Street Bridge Slope Protection and River Wall Repairs Contract Number 855.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two tonight? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to open some bids, ladies and gentlemen, and we have three, four, five, six, seven, seven tonight, and the estimate is $396,078 from our Engineering Department. Actually, we have eight, eight bids, ladies and gentlemen.
The first bid is from Boulder Contracting of Grundy Center, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $293,163,293,163.00. The next bid is from Kramer and Associates, Inc. of Grimes, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $258,322.50, 258,322.50. The next bid is from Jasper Construction Services of Newton, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $238,406,238,406.00. The next bid is from Mike Dolan Concrete and Masonry of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $233,674.60, 233,674.60. And the next bid is from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Reinbeck, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. The total bid is for $177,636.50, 177,636.50.
At least you got them in the right order.
The next bid is from Rickliff's Escavating of Anamosa, Iowa. And the bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $223,250,223,250.00. And the next bid is from Taylor Construction, Inc. of New Vienna, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $317,975,317,975.00. And the final bid is from Beath Construction Corp. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total bid is for $252,556,252,556.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eric? Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the FY 2014 Bridge Deck Repairs and Overlay Program Contract Number 777.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Bridge Deck Overlay Program? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to close the hearing. Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file and instruct city clerk to open and read bids, and refer to city engineer for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we have four bids on this project with an estimate of $1,612,405.53. Madam Clerk, please.
The first bid is from Kramer and Associate of Grimes, Iowa. Their bid bond is for 5 percent. The total base bid is $871,962.55, 871,962.55. Alternate A is not bid, and alternate A option two is $291,220,291,220.00. The second bid is from Jasper Construction Services of Newton, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And the total base bid is for $861,206.8, 861,206.08. Alternate A option one is not bid. Alternate A option two is $382,226.25, 382,226.25. The next bid is from PCI Roads of St. Michael, Minnesota. The bid bond is for 5 percent. The total base bid is $993,680.65, 993,680.65. Alternate A option one is $353,104.25, 353,104.25. And alternate A option two is not bid. The final bid is from Wick's Construction, Inc. of Decorah, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5 percent. And... They didn't break out their totals, but their total base bid with option two is $1,425,001,425,000.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Eric, if you could get those two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Getty.
Item four is a request by the Bosnian Islamic Association of Waterloo, Iowa, for a site plan amendment to the R4 RP Planned Multiple Family Resident District to allow for the development of a new mosque cemetery and sports and recreation complex generally located at on 15.26 acres south of Magnolia Drive and north of Memory Lane.
Miracle.
Miracle Drive, excuse me, and north of Memory Lane. I make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and, Mr. Getty, before you move on to the second one, I know we have some representatives from the Bosnian community here. If one of you would like to speak at this time, and maybe have some explanations, any that would be fine, just come to the microphone, please, if you have, and I will allow you to have any comments that you want, but I want to make sure that you understand, the reason that we are asking to table this at our next motion is, not that there's anything wrong with the project, I think the mosque and the sports amenities and all that are great projects, so is the cemetery, but, in order for the city to protect itself fifty years from now, or whatever, we have to have some things in place. The state provides that if a cemetery ever goes bankrupts or has financial problems, and the city has to maintain ownership of that, and there are some ways to protect the city from that, so, if you understand that, I'm quite sure that we can get this worked out, I'm quite sure that everything is going to go forward, but we have to get this issue with the cemetery taken care of first. So, with that said, if you have any comments, please feel free to make them.
Yes, sir, I understand that.
Okay.
I have no any comments on that really.
Okay.
In the future, you never know what can happen, but, the people that we have in this community are heading to this for a long time already, trying to find the right spot and right place to build and have everything that we can provide for our communication, which I'm like one of presentative that try to address that and try to go forward and make something right for us, so...
And I'm sure you will. I mean, again, I'm quite sure that this project is going to move forward. If you'll just speak, Mr. Anderson, who is, who are the right people to work this out? Or, Mr. Walsh, I'm not sure who that question is, should be directed to, but...
Well, I think our city planning department can do it, and we'll review the contract when they're done with it, and it shouldn't be a difficult thing to do, there are state code provisions, as you know, that deal with...
Okay, okay, so, we'll get it worked out, we just have to get that problem, that part of the contract satisfied, and we'll get it worked out.
I understand.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
I'll get it to you. What is your address, sir?
I'm sorry?
Your address, I know your name, what is your address?
My name is Sanad. I used to be president, like, a month ago, I pass over to another person who will take care of the community right now, but I'm still presenting what's going on right now with...
Just for our record, Joe Sanad, what is your home address, please?
1020 Oregon Street.
Thank you very much.
702.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns or comments regarding why we're asking to table? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Getty?
Mr. Getty.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on to the resolutions, please, and let's do five, six, and seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wilper, I heard you first.
Number five is a resolution approving a letter of support for Main Street Waterloo's application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a Main Street Challenge Grant for the renovation of the Bride's Corner located at 620 Commercial Street, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number six is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number two, with AECOM Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, for additional construction-related services in the amount of $21,500, in conjunction with the fiscal year 2012 East Donald Street Improvements Contract Number 797, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number seven is a resolution approving a snow disposition agreement with Cedar Valley Tech Works, Inc., allowing the city to use portions of the Tech Works parking area for downtown snow storage, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any comments regarding five, six, or seven? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number eight, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement with the Iowa Department of Economic Development and JSA Development for the rehabilitation of 223, 225, 227, and 229 West Fourth Street within the enterprise zone boundaries, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Item number nine is adopting a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement with the Iowa Department of Economic Development and Blackhawk Contracting and Development LLC for the construction of four homes located at the former Francis Grouse School within enterprise zone boundaries, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. And item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving Housing Enterprise Zone Program Agreement with Iowa Department of Economic Development and Blackhawk County and Development LLC for the construction of four homes located at the corner of Lafayette and Seventh Street within enterprise zone boundaries, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Second.
Very good. Counsel, any comments on eight, nine, or 10? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Go ahead.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Wilper.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, next three, please, 11, 12, 13.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to adopt a resolution, completion of work performed by Benton Sand and Gravel, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the final amount of $186,000... Wait. Let me see, where was that amendment at? Completion of work performed by Benton Sand and Gravel, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the final amount of $186,396.20, which reflects a total increase of $17,578.71 from the original bid amount of $168,817.49 for the Ridgeway Tower Storm Sewer Underground Detention. 12, I move we adopt a resolution approving award of hotel motel discretionary funding to the following entities, Main Street Waterloo for holiday decorations in the amount of $6,000.
to the following entities: Main Street Waterloo for holiday decorations in the amount of six thousand dollars; Social Action, Inc. for concert sponsorship in the amount of ten thousand dollars; and Waterloo Police Department for event overtime in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And then thirteen, move to adopt a resolution approving development agreement between Cedar Valley Warehouse LLC and the City of Waterloo for the construction of a forty-thousand-square-foot industrial building in the Airport Tiff District, adding one-point-two-million dollars of taxable value to the site, and offering five years at fifty percent tax rebates to company, plus a grant to purchase property for two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second. Very good. Comments on eleven, twelve, or thirteen? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask on item number twelve, what is Social Action, Inc.? What is, I'm not familiar with them at all.
Okay. Social Action, Inc. is a nonprofit organization that's ran by David Goodson that does a lot of very good stuff for the, primarily the black community, African-American community in the city of Waterloo. And the ask is for a partial sponsorship for a concert that Mr. Goodson wants to put on for the benefit and the good of the community. Further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Getty.
The seventeen thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars on item number eleven. Why is that increase? On what? What is that?
I don't know.
Ethel Washington, Waterloo Housing Authority. You had already approved that. That was for the easement with the attorneys behind Ridgeway Towers. And then the four ninety-five is for the striping of the parking lot.
Yes, okay.
Thanks, Ethel.
Thank you.
Further questions on eleven, twelve, or thirteen? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Let's do item number fourteen. And Mr. Hart, if you can read all of those, combine that into one motion, that'd be great. Mr. Hart.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code by rescinding subsection sixty-two Lafayette Street to section five-five-three, no parking here to corner, and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection sixty-two Lafayette Street to section five-five-three, no parking here to corner. And also, under that same one, motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending two thousand and eight traffic code by repealing subsection two-one-six Lafayette Street of section five-five-one, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, and enacting in lieu thereof a new subsection two-one-six Lafayette Street of section five-five-one, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. And also, under that, a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code by repealing subsection eight Lafayette Street, southwest side of Lafayette Street, from Division Street to Vinton Street of section five-six-three, one-hour parking, for an ordinance change. No parking this side, southwest side of Lafayette Street, from Vinton Street to Lane Street.
Second. Questions or comments, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor, for all those items, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Mr. Mayor, for all those items, a motion to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Items, uh... Can we do fifteen and sixteen together, I believe? Yes, sir. Could somebody do fifteen and sixteen, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I'll try.
Okay.
Fifteen is, I move that we instruct the Leisure Services Director to prepare plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera, for the South Hills Drainage Improvements Project. And sixteen is a motion to instruct Community Planning and Development Director to prepare plans, specs, form of contract on the request for proposal for demolition and site clearance services for ten nineteen Lafayette Street.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions on either one of those motions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's carry.
I move for both fifteen and sixteen that we receive and file plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry.
I move that we adopt a resolution preliminarily approving plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
And finally, I move we adopt a resolution setting date of hearing and bid opening on the drainage project as November twelfth, and on the demo project as November eighteenth, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of plans, specs, form of contract, et cetera, on both items.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business for tonight. Rather, for the short meeting tonight, it's time for oral comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either to the mayor or to the council, now is the time to do so. If you would please step to the microphone and give us your name and your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, I would be much appreciated.
Jerry Schatzler, eighteen-twenty-nine West Seventh. Before I begin, how this all started. I was very upset with this proposal when you agreed to let the people vote whether they wanted to have the Grouse Museum used city money for. And then, of course, all of a sudden, the propaganda come pouring out, especially, who I never watched anyway, but I thought I would watch Ron Steele. The first thing he had, three people for it, nobody against it. That, to me, was not fair and balanced. It made me even angrier. Especially when you look at our K-WL building that someday the people will be paying property tax on for the meteorologists in K-WL do not live in Waterloo, the main ones, for the news commentators that do not live in Waterloo. So they're living outside the tax district of Waterloo, enjoying the good life of Waterloo on the small taxpayers' money. That's number one. Number two, I happened to be with a lady who forty years ago started out without a proverbial pot and a window to throw it out of, went to New York and opened up an international software company before people knew what software was all about. They were successful, sold it to 3M, and started up another one. So who I was with was nobody that was ding. She was pretty, pretty smart. And anyway, I went out of town with her to a business thing she was going to. And I met a guy, and he come up, and he says, "Where are you from?" And I said, "I'm from Waterloo." He said, "Oh, I wouldn't live in that town." I said, "Why?" I said, "Is it our policeman?" He says, "You guys got good policemen." He says, "I used to go to school when education wasn't political, and her sociology professor said the worst thing you can do is diversify culture because it's hard to maintain your discipline as far as law and order." I found that interesting. The second thing he said, "I wonder if there's a lot of 'you wash my hand, I'll wash your hand'" going on in Waterloo." I says, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, I don't have any proof to it," but he says, "I see a lot of things that really make me wonder that." And that's as far as it went. And that's as far as I'll go. But these people are the kind of people could probably buy your K-WL building, could probably make people want to move into Waterloo, but I got news for you, they wouldn't do it. And neither would I. Have a good day, and thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thanks for the comments.
Cheryl Christensen, seventeen-oh-two East Mitchell in Waterloo. I'm just curious what's happening with Wrath Building on Division and Sycamore Street. I thought it was supposed to be something completed or started by the end of September, and I don't see anything happening there, so I'm just curious as to what.
Thank you, Cheryl, for the question. Actually, there is a little bit of activity going on in there. But Noel, can you explain to what extent and what should be coming next?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, and of course, we have the development agreement with Mako LLC out of California. They are working on the redevelopment of the building. They are utilizing state and federal historic tax credits. The state office came back and wanted them to do some more documentation on the windows before they replaced them. So they're kind of waiting to do that, working with the state before they proceed back with the actual renovation.
Cheryl, it is a long and arduous task, but they have replaced some of the windows. They've removed most of the old windows, and they have put up a chain-link fence all the way around it. So there is activity there, at least on the short term, that there hasn't been for a long time. So we're all anxious for that to come to fruition.
It doesn't look like it, but I am concerned that we preserve some of our original buildings in Waterloo, and I'd like to see that.
And we have that, and you know, the council extended the contract for that fellow to work on that, so we, that's our intent. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch. I was wondering, where are we on this dangerous dog ordinance? It's been three months now. Funny, we got a budget passed. We've been three months without this ordinance.
Jim, we are in the process. The, our animal control people have pretty much finished all of their suggestions, and it has been turned over to our legal department to put all of that massive information into a document that we can all understand and work with. I talked to, Chris Wenland is actually working on it from the legal staff, and I was hoping to get to that within this week or next. I'm thinking it's still going to be sometime probably mid-November before it gets taken care of.
I was coming down Mitchell Street the other day, and there was a lady walking three dogs. There was no traffic behind me, so I thought I'd slow down and roll the window down. So I rolled the window down, and I said, "Ma'am," I said, "all those dogs got tags?" I ain't too sure what she told me. I think she told me I was number one, but I ain't give me a clue that dogs didn't have tags.
I can tell you, just, you know, Jim, just, just as a side comment, we, you know, we are very actively enforcing the potential dangerous dog ordinance. It's on the books. We wrote a citizen this morning almost eighteen-hundred dollars' worth of tickets to a dog, so... But I'm, I'm as, probably almost as anxious as all of you are to get this on the books and to get it in front of council and let them make comments as they wish.
Randy Herring, one-eleven Highland. And along that same vein, when you do get to the point of having that draft put together, will the citizens have a chance to comment on it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. There will be a hearing, Randy, and I'll schedule extra time because I know there'll be comments. Absolutely, you will. You bet.
I was wondering about the dog ordinance, too.
Name an address, please.
Barb Sharp, and I'm at fourteen-oh-six Real Street.
Okay. Thank you, Barb.
On our street, once again, somebody in front of their house, they were almost attacked by pit bulls that lived across the street. And I, this person's been issued three citations. And it was, I guess, maybe none of my business, but I was pulling by, and I saw the gathering, and I figured that's what it was about. And the one guy that was, the other neighbor, said that he couldn't even work in his driveway on his cars anymore because of the, these two dogs. They're a certain breed, but it's just the point that the people that, the man that was taking his smaller dog out for a walk didn't even get out his driveway. And these other two dogs came barreling across the street, and his wife just was pulling in. She had to get a club and go after the dogs, or it would have gotten really ugly. I mean, three citations, it's not keeping anybody safe, okay? I really want to know what's going to keep us safe. I have a dog, and he's... I just couldn't guarantee what I would do if someone would hurt my dog. I have a right to walk my dogs down the street, and so do these people. They have lived in their house forty years.
Do, Barb, and we will do the best to address that. But, you know, let me, let me say this as we're talking about it. You know, we are going to pass, or I'm not sure, council, I believe, will at some point pass, a very strict ordinance aimed at owners of animals.
It'll keep us safe.
Having said that, it's, it's against the law to rob stores. It's against the law to burglarize houses. We don't stop those things. So is this ordinance going to stop every dog attack? No, it's not. But we will have something that we can work with that's going to address the real problem, which is the owners of animals, whatever the kind they may be. And I think that you'll be pleased with it when you see it.
I sure hope so, because I was here, oh, a couple of weeks ago, and they were, they read what they thought they were going to do, and it sounded very good, like it would accomplish that, get rid of every responsible owner so that we would be safe again. Okay, thank you. I hope to hear the results.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have something nice I'd like to say if I could.
Okay, very quickly, please, Jerry.
I'll flip it. Last month, we had one of the nicest, classiest women in Waterloo pass away. I've known her periodically, not close, but Kathy always reminded me of Cahill's Brahm. I'm surprised I read that kind of stuff, which basically says, "A woman born of poor stature can have more class than a healthy woman." Where am I going with, or a wealthy woman? Where am I going with this? I would like to somehow see the city of Waterloo, and I'm Lutheran, the Catholic Church, and Ed Gallagher, if he so wishes, come up with something to honor this woman because if a person ever deserves it, she does, and there are far and few between.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
And just since Jerry's brought it up, for those that are listening that might wonder who Jerry's talking about, it's Ed Gallagher's wife, Kathy Gallagher, passed away last week. And Jerry is absolutely right. Kathy was a wonderful person, an enormous asset to this community, as is Ed Gallagher. Both of them are very, very influential and an awful lot of good things that have happened in this city. So we will miss Kathy greatly, as I'm sure Ed does. So thank you for your kind words. Anything further?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
In last week's Wall Street Journal, full-page ad, "Welcome to the new New York. Bring us your business. Pay no taxes." Now your business can set up or expand in New York and pay no taxes for ten years. That means no state, local, corporate, business, or property taxes. We're not alone in giving away the farm.
Those are quite some incentives. Thank you. Yes, sir. You just beat the buzzer, Forrest.
Last-minute guy. Forrest Ilavu, seventeen-twenty-five Huntington Road. I would like to know, we've been collecting a stormwater fee for a couple of years now, or several years. I would like to know where my money has gone. As I look around my neighborhood, I don't see any change to amount to much. They did clean a ditch, took a day or day and a half and did a wonderful job. But the stagnant water, that's stormwater, that lays in a field there, it's still a West Nile breeding ground. It's green as grass, and even yet this year. You know, I'd like to know where our dollars went. How many have you collected and where they went? Is there somewhere I can obtain that information, and how do I do it?
Sure. I don't know if it's public or not. You can certainly get, how would Forrest find that, Michelle?
Michelle Weidner, Chief Financial Officer, if you want to stop down and see me, I can get you some information about how that's been used.
I'd be glad to stop and see you. Thank you, Michelle.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to receive and file oral comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.